A call for meeting to order, and I recall for the adoption of the agenda of the ninety-ninth meeting.
Salute.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Palmright.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimous. We don't have any delegations tonight. Kathy?
No.
Okay.
Did I just ask one question? When do you think, I don't know if anyone knows when there may be an opportunity for people to come back into the public gallery. I don't know, anyone has that answer? Is there no timeline, or who we got to get that from? You know? Just a few people wondering when they can come back in.
It depends on the physical distancing guidelines. But right now, although in the council chambers it's rated for, I think it's for the people. With physical distancing guidelines, we're saying we're on the people's fault.
Which is what's, pretty well what's here now.
So, you will keep on following the guidelines, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, a call for the adoption of the previous minutes, the ninety-seventh minutes, August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one.
Salute.
It's been moved by Council Dyson Edmonds. Do I have a second there?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Compton Huggs. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Carried unanimous. Call for the adoption of the ninety-eighth minute, September thirteen, two thousand twenty-one.
Salute.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki. Seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried unanimous. Correspondents will skip through that, and we'll come into committees and recommendations. And the first one is Councilor Cran, Municipal Services.
Thank you, Worship. Meeting was held on... Here with me, Worship. September seventh, twenty-one. Meeting was called to order, review of national items. Fire department reported since last committee meeting. Eight false alarms, two car fires, one backyard fire, one MVA, one mutual aid. Condition of fire apparatus, pump one fully serviceable, pump two fully serviceable. Rescue one, car thirty-five, fully serviceable, rescue two, car twenty, truck, fully serviceable. Rescue three, car nine, this is the old enforcement Tahoe. Vehicle will be assigned to the new fire protection officer. Paint and clean, cleaning complete. Waiting on light upgrades and decals. Fire protection officer position, job description was approved by the union, job posting was closed. More details to follow. Municipal Services Committee crews are currently performing regular seasonal duties, sand removal, ongoing road shoulder sweeping and vacuuming. Road maintenance ongoing, shoulder repair work, signage maintenance ongoing, asphalt cut, road cuts complete. Assisting other departments, lime painting ongoing, most of the time completed with some touch-up to be done. Depot maintenance ongoing. Seasonal road rating complete. Heavy equipment fleet maintenance is still ongoing. Heavy equipment fleet continue providing issues with servicing and breakdowns, early discussion and evaluation needed. Landfill tipping fees generated to date, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Drainage and ditching upgrades in town ongoing. The, under the environmental services. Daily water handling ongoing. Daily silver checks ongoing, water treatment plant ongoing. I did speak with Superintendent Pye this afternoon, and he said no major issues, everything was, was rolling along. The new high roof man has arrived in Goose. It will be implemented into the fleet when ready. There are still two items required to meet the specs. Fire hard replacements will begin this year. Leaky roof has been repaired in building twenty. Provincial government approved four infrastructure operating projects for the town, there follows. Storm drainage improvements. Total project cost fifty-five thousand. Approval has been received under the Investing Canada Infrastructure Program. Received operating three series lift stations in the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And RFP is required to be prepared for a section of the engineering consultant. Approval has been also received for the operating of D forty-two compouts in the amount of one million six hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And RFP is required to be prepared for the selection of the engineering consultant. Contract been awarded, was awarded in November for Concrete Foundation, November second, to Greens Construction in the amount of forty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars contract. They've been awarded to ABC Recreation on August twenty-sixth in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twelve cents for the supply of the gazebo. This project being funded by ACOA and TCII, L.O. The available funding for this project is one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Gazebo was shipped and received in November. That, Worship, is my report. I ask that it be accepted as presented, and I do have one recommendation.
Moved by Councilor Cran, do I have a second there?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Deputy Mayor Palmroyd. Are there any questions on the report?
Town engineer, can you give us an update on the groundwater issue?
I'm going to turn that over to the engineer, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor. Staff are making improvements on various storm drainage and groundwater issues throughout town. Staff are cutting brush and so on from Commercial to Grand Street in the, in the, in the creek that follows that, that course down there. With the hope also of clearing that and then making storm drainage improvements. Town's also in the process of installing a storm detention chamber on Abbot Drive. And as well installing another storm detention chamber on McDonald Drive. And this work is expected to start within the next day or two. We're also in the process of getting survey work completed in the Roberts Road, Cooper Crescent area. So the intent is to, once we get that survey information, we'll be able to design an appropriate storm water system in that area also. Another area that we're also hoping to improve storm drainage improvements is down around Grand Street. We also had, as everyone is aware, the culvert on Kelland Drive. We had hydrogeological voice saying that we could open that with no impacts downstream. And however, it would not make much of a difference to the basement flooding in the subdivisions in the area. So in light of that, this work was completed today. There was significant flow from the culvert from north to south. As a result, is probably a little bit more than was anticipated. And it appears like is affecting maybe some other properties on the other side of the road. So we're going to have to possibly block that culvert for the next day or two until we get some more advice. Till we discuss these, this particular issue with the property owners. And, and see if we can mitigate some of the potential water flow that's going onto the property.
So you consult with the specialists on that, will you?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be discussing with this, with the hydrogeologist. And let him know what the results of opening that culvert was. And, and, and we'll take, I'll, I'll, I'll see what his advice is, and I'll bring that back to council for, for discussion.
Was that, was that the initial fear? Was there concern when you, if you opened that culvert? Was there concern that water would flow from one end to the other and create issues, or?
Initially in the report, the, the surface water drainage is normally from south to north in that area. So there was some speculation that there wouldn't be a whole lot of flow through that culvert. But apparently there was significant flow through the culvert. And it's been recharged from the, the wetlands in behind the area. So my fear, my fear...
In behind Mitchell Paddle, or the wetlands from there?
In, in behind Mitchell Paddle, and the whole wetlands in behind the north of the town. So my fear is that it might bring great volumes of water down into that area. Which would further, may further affect subdivisions on the south end of Kelland. So I'd like to, as I just noted, to close that culvert until we get more expert advice as to what the most appropriate action we, we should take.
Mr. Dillon, can you, sorry, Mr. Dillon, can you just explain, because you hear all kinds of stuff out there. And people for some reason believe the drainage, the natural drainage may run off on that water. Can you just explain that so people understand it? When it's going across the road, it's not, there's no natural drainage, it's just gathering there on that, on that property across the road now, right?
Well, right now, across the road on that property, it's, it's bounded by the hill on, on, on the, on the west side. And then on the southern side, you have the bike trail and Trunk Silver Main. And then on the, the east side, you have Boise's Drive. So there's really not much, and there's no drainage out of that area. So if you put a large volume of water into that particular area, you possibly could, could turn that area, which we do not own, into a, another wetland possibly, and damage, damage that land. So, and, and as well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't aid any of the residents to the east of Boise's Drive either. So I, I think really what we need to do is just block the culvert until we perform, until the hydrogeologists can perform more analysis and give us more, more informed advice.
And can you just give us an update on the canal work? We, some of the residents are quite frustrated because, oh, it's starting in two weeks, it's starting next week, it's starting Monday, but it's still not started. Do you have any idea when it's going to start?
Yeah, that's correct, Councillor. There's some issue there with supply documentation by the contractor, and the consultant feels that documentation needs to be improved, or needs to be more, better presented. So I've had some emails on it today, and I'll have a further discussion with the consultant tomorrow and the contractor. I'm hoping within a day or so we can get this resolved, and, and you know, this, we can finally get this project started.
So my understanding is the culvert is there, right? It's, it's here, the culvert is.
Everything is here. The culvert that's going across Court Real Drive, Court Real Road has, has arrived. Contractor's ready to start, he has his equipment on site, I think. And as soon as he gets, he gets the documentation approved by CBCL Lemon, who's the, the engineering consultant, he can then go ahead and start work. The both, everyone's anxious to get the work started, it's just this little issue with, with having the documentation accepted by the consultant.
So are we talking like safety plans, or?
It's a site-specific safety plan, yes.
How soon will that approval come, Randy?
I'm hoping within the next day or so. I think they're very, very close to, to having this, you know, these little terms straightened up between them.
So I've got another question, Mr. Dillon. When we met with the hydrologists, the experts, who said that this was a groundwater issue and so on. We talked about, I asked specifically about drenching it to Lake Melville, was that an option? And he said it was an option, but it was going to cost a lot of money. So if there's no, if, if the canal doesn't work, the next option would be to, and I'm just asking you so to make sure I understand this correctly. To complete a engineering study? Would that be the next option? If, if that's what the council wanted to, how they wanted to proceed?
Well, it's a, is always, excuse me. It's always an option to, to, to further study, you know, this particular issue. I think what the hydrogeologist noted was that the cost of the study would, would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. They'd have to buy, dig test pits and monitor them for a number of months to see exactly how water flow and how the groundwater flow works in, works in the area. And then based on the, the data that they collect, then it would have to engineer and design an appropriate storm drainage system. Which could involve a number of pumping stations to pump excess groundwater to, to Lake Mel, or the, Lake Melville and so on. So it could be a fairly costly venture, and I think at the time, you know, it was something that the town didn't have the cash for, or didn't have the capital works capacity for. But it's not something that can't be considered in the future, that I guess, you know, another proposal can be submitted. Depending upon the nature of, of how these, how future years, the precipitation in future years.
As the hydrogeologist explained to us when he was in, you know, with regards to a further study into that area, like you said, you're, it would be in the hundreds of thousands, no doubt. Which isn't, which isn't a lot compared to the thirty or forty million dollar price tag that it would be, that, you know, he, he kind of alluded to, to actually drain it to the river. And, and he did, he did say that, you know, from his initial inspection of the area and from his expertise. You know, that, that this was something that is not going to go away anytime soon. So I think that's, that's obviously everybody's fear, not just the residents, but the, but the entire, like, the entire town, right? So I don't know where that would go.
Yeah, that's correct, Councillor. In order really to know what your, what the solution is, you really have to study to see what the...
That's right.
What the problem is, and how serious the problem is. And then based on that, you can design your solution around what you, what data you've, you've collected.
In my opinion, it's quite obvious whoever's on the next council should, should take this as a priority, because it's a serious issue. And the fear is there, I mean, even the people that are not impacted now, they're, they're, you know, they don't know if they're next, or the neighbors of these people that are flooded. So it's certainly a, a big issue.
Yeah. And hydrogeologists did say it was, it would require a long-term solution, correct?
It would be a, a lo, a long-term study, it would probably be in the months or maybe a year or so. I can't remember now the exact timeframe that it gave.
But fix itself would take years.
Oh, the fix itself, we're going to need another, we need a couple of dry years for the groundwater levels to, to receive back to where, where the...
I asked him a specific question about long-term because of the creeks on Saunders and Cabot, and they were all dried up for about twenty years. And now they're all wide open with ducts beyond Cartwright and Saunders. So yeah, so I mean, it's, it's definitely, definitely not going away, and he told us that, that it wasn't going away. And he offered sump pumps, people to put sump pumps in their basements to try to, you know, for a short-term solution. But this is, we need a long-term solution.
You're right, I mean, the, the new council will, and you know, maybe too, that, you know, whoever the new councillor is, that maybe immediately it should be a, a, an emergency meeting held with the appropriate officials, including the MP. And, and the problems again. I mean, we're up there sowing land up on the stretch here. And, you know, the developer did land, there's a problem. A gentleman approached me today, he just put a four million dollar building up there, and he said the water is almost up to his driveway. So there's no question. So, you know, when it comes down to dollars, I guess the whole area there, that it's just getting bigger and bigger. People who hunted up there years ago said that the pond wasn't the gunshot across, and now some of the ponds seem back, you need to boat to get across there. So obviously, and, and, and the water is not going away, it's, it's, you know, it's just sitting there, so.
That's correct, Mayor. If we have another couple of wet years like we've had in the last couple of years, I know the, the environmental, Department of Environment data shows that we've had, you know, the last five years have been significantly higher than, than past for the last twenty-five, thirty years. So if we have another couple of years, it would definitely, certainly be exacerbated with, you know, with these issues that we're having with, with groundwater levels, and potentially a lot more houses being impacted.
Randy, one more question around that. I was at Jordan Kearls' house last week, and it's heartbreaking and devastation to, to go in there and see the damage. And, but I just wondered, because when we met with the hydrologists, one of the options was for them to put in that permanent sump pump, and which I think he got, but it could hook into the... it could hook into the sewer system, right?
Uh, that's right. The only option when he, when he puts in, uh, uh, Mr. Kearl puts in a sump pump is to hook into our sanitary sewer.
Yeah. So did anybody reach out and have that discussion with him?
Uh, he was given the, uh, documentation. There are experts on the island who designed these sump, s- pump solutions, uh, and that was provided to him. So then it's up to the individual if he wants to ca- uh, contact an appropriate designer for advice and for a cast to, uh, to put in one of these, uh, uh, sump pumps.
Okay. Are there any further questions on the Municipal Services Report? There being none all in favor of the report?
Aye.
I carry unanimous. We'll move on now to Council Compton-Hobbs Community Services and Recreation.
No, you don't have a recommendation.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You do have a recommendation, I'm sorry.
Municipal Service Committee, bid resolved. Twelve council, the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay, provide a letter of support to Dennis Cabot for his application of funding assistance to establish an industrial tire repair service business to operate in Happy Valley Goose Bay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Council Cran, seconded by Council Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward?
Just, uh, is there, I guess, he hasn't identified where he'd wanna put that to though, did he? Or do we know that?
No, but I, from what I know, it's, he's looking at somewhere on Seaside.
Okay, perfect.
And it's just a letter of support at this point, right?
Okay. There being none further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimous. Okay. We'll now move on to Council Compton-Hobbs Community Services and Recreation.
Okay. Community Service and Recreation Committee met on September the seventh. Present was myself, Councillor Bake, uh, Michelle Bake via telephone, program coordinator Anne Morris, executive assistant Kathy Eddy, PR manager Waylon Williams, director of community development, research Brenna Drur, regrets, councillor Sean Cran, DFO Nadine McCauley, uh, engineer Randy Dillon, and campaign manager Michelle Northover. Uh, some of the things that we discussed in the meeting, well, uh, were, uh, we received a letter from, uh, the Modern Soccer Association regarding the soccer pitch up on AMC Sportsplex, and they were looking to divide the, uh, field. Actually, myself and the program coordinator went up there and met with Carlos Baring, and they're looking at dividing the field, field, which this committee never had an issue with. Um, so there's some correspondence with Carlos and, uh, the meeting again in the future to discuss this further. They wanted just to have two soccer pitches in one field, cause the field is big, so there's, you know, you're quite capable of doing that. Uh, we talked about a drive-in, uh, movie and, uh, our PR manager Waylon Williams is doing some research with that along with Brenna Drur. So that could be something that would be possibly happening, uh, in the future. We talked about the trail systems. Uh, Brenna advised that she did, uh, submit an application for an extra hundred thousand for a bike trail extension. So, uh, you know, we have done some work on the trails and, uh, hoping in the future to improve much-needed trails in the, uh, community. Uh, we have a Happy Valley Day, the seventy-eighth Happy Valley Day is planned for Sunday, September the twenty-sixth at Kensington Park from one to five. We have some music and, uh, some vendors and, uh, you know, some other activities. So come on out on Sunday, uh, at Kensington Park. We talked a little bit about YMCA and the pool. They were having some difficulty with, uh, lifeguards, but they now have a new group that are trained, so the hours will be expanding. So that's great news. Um, and, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, the play, adult playground equipment that was budgeted last year and that's been ordered and will be here for next spring. And our next meeting will be, was not, uh, there was no date until the new council's sworn in. And I ask that you please accept my report as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Council Compton-Hobbs, seconded by Council Cran. Are there any questions on the report?
Uh, Mr. Dillon, I just wondering, uh, if you could give us an update on the, there's lots of questions out there around the gateway bike trail. Where, what work is actually gonna be completed on that in the next few weeks? I know they started on both ends.
Uh, yes councillor, there's two, uh, two sections, uh, under construction at the same time. One is the, uh, the gateway up by the, the intersection of Hamilton River Road and Kelland Drive. Uh, the other gateway is down by Tim Horton's. And, uh, this, uh, this contract was awarded to, uh, to a local contractor, uh, JJ's is the operating name. So, uh, uh, that will be completed this year. There was another tender called for the widening of the bike trail and paving of, of the bike trail. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids. Uh, and so the intention now is that we, we have to re-tender this now, uh, sometime in the winter and see if we can, uh, see if we can, uh, probably, uh, you know, talk to some contractors and ensure that they're, they're interested in, in proceeding with this work.
Can you just clarify for the listening audience, the trail, uh, uh, costs was, that was budgeted, that was multi-year capital works money? That was approved three years ago?
That's correct councillor. That was budgeted for three years ago in multi-year, two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen, multi-year capital works program.
So it's not new money, it's not, it's money that was budgeted through the multi-year capital works and, and the town's share and the province and the feds. Three years ago, this-
That's, that's correct councillor.
Okay, yeah.
So just, uh, just to clarify, so multi-year capital works, does it include the federal government? It doesn't do it?
Uh, no, it doesn't councillor.
And also, uh, when, uh, we had discussions earlier last year about, uh, putting a paved, uh, uh, three-meter, uh, bike lane on, uh, that would run parallel to Kelland Drive, uh, extension. Uh, where are we to with that? That, you were hoping to get a tender out on that soon?
Uh, the design is done. It went to hydro for approval, waiting on final approval. Uh, it's probably unlikely we're gonna get that constructed this year. We do have money allocated in the two thousand, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty-twenty-three multi-year capital works program. Uh, so that will go from Hefler to Adams Loop. And, uh, I, I, hopefully that'll be completed, that'll be tendered. If we can't get a, it was anticipated that maybe we could do it as an extension to the contract with ACL. But I think they have, uh, some major commitments on the, on the Translabor Highway. So it appears like they're not gonna be able to get that done this year. So we'll have to tender that work and, uh, and hopefully get it completed next year. But it'll certainly be a great addition to the trail system in the town because the intention then would, would be to connect that up to the bike trail.
Yeah.
Up through and adjacent to, uh, to Edmund's Crescent. And so it'll be, uh, basically a, a town, a town-wide trail. So, I think.
Mr. Dillon, oh, sorry. Mr. Dillon, uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, that we also received a letter from Carlos Baring, and we had a discussion around, uh, enhancing trails. And, uh, I'll just pass that on to you so you got that information. Maybe something you could look at in the future?
Sure, thanks councillor.
Are there any questions on the, uh, uh, report before by Council Compton-Hobbs? There being none all in favor of the report?
Aye.
I carry unanimous. And you do have a recommendation to bring forward.
I do. Community Service and Recreation Committee stewardship agreement. The Community Service and Recreation Committee recommends to council that the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay enter in, into an agreement known as the Birch Alling Conservation Area Stewardship Agreement with Healthy Waters Labrador Incorporated for a term of three years and to authorize the mayor and town clerk to sign on the town's behalf at an official signing to the, to be held on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Council Compton-Hobbs. Do I have a second there?
Right here.
Okay. Seconded by Council Cran. Are there any questions? There being none all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
I carry unanimous. We'll move on next to development, planning and enforcement. Deputy Mayor Palmeroy.
Thank you, your worship. Development, planning and enforcement committee met on September the ninth. Present were myself as chair, councillors Dyson Edmonds, joined by phone, uh, councillor Compton-Hobbs, engineer Randy Dillon, municipal technologist Brian Johnson, GIS tech Paul Zao, and executive assistant Kathy Eddy, regrets from municipal enforcement officer Larry Baker. The meeting was called to order at four forty-one PM. We reviewed the minutes and action, action items. There were no errors or omissions. Much of the discussion centered around crown land and discretionary land use applications, of which I will be presenting a number of recommendations for councils to consideration now shortly. But before, uh, that, your worship, I just wanna note several, that several reports were not contained in the report, uh, committee report this, this month. Uh, the mayor's report, uh, from the RCMP was included in the committee package along with the complaints report. And I trust that council had an opportunity to review, review both. Uh, as enforcement falls under this committee, I just want to note that, uh, council was recently provided with the breakdown of the cost associated with increasing security throughout the community, in particular, the month-to-month contract with Garter World. During the period from June seventeenth to September eleventh, the town has been billed a total of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, which is much less than, uh, council had originally estimated and significantly less than what's being speculated in the public. From all accounts and from reviewing the complaints report, the increased security has yielded positive results. Uh, your worship, I, I just wanna thank the security company for their efforts, uh, over the past three months. As noted in the RCMP report, the detachment responded to a total of six hundred and thirty-two occurrences, which were classified as cause for service during the month of August, compared to five hundred and ten occurrences in twenty-twenty, with a total of one hundred and forty-nine persons being incarcerated for a variety of offenses. The report also notes that the RCMP continues to implement its annual performance plan community priorities, namely improving road safety through education and enforcement, crime reduction and community relations. With respect to enhancing road safety, goals have been set for improved traffic initiatives with increased traffic enforcement and regular check stops to help combat impaired driving in our community. A detachment member has initiated a positive ticketing, ticketing campaign to promote bike safety for children. And all RCMP officers have been provided tickets to distribute while on patrol. These are being distributed to youth demonstrating positive bike safety, such as wearing a helmet. Municipal enforcement officer Larry Baker will also be helping hand out tickets as well. Uh, the kids can take the tickets to either Subway, Tim Horton's for a donut, Dairy Queen, and, uh, for a super snack. And, uh, just to acknowledge Labradorian printers provided the tickets, I believe complimentary. Uh, goals have also been set for proactive initiatives to help reduce crimes against persons and property. Detachment members will undertake to implement additional measures to monitor persons bound by court orders to ensure compliance. Due to the increase in crimes through social media site, uh, computers, the RCMP will be seeking opportunities to provide awareness on crimes related to fraud and cybercrime. Detachment members have also been monitoring persons bound by court imposed conditions, with members conducting routine compliance checks. In its efforts to build and maintain positive relationships, relations with our community, your worship, the detachment commander will ensure there is regular contact and communications with council, as well as with Constable, Constable Baker. Uh, it was, overall, it was a short meeting, your worship, uh, ending at five eleven, um, PM. With that, I move that the report be accepted as read.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, seconded by, uh, Council Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the report?
Uh, just to speak to the, uh, security contract. Um, we've had discussions that the contract will be, or could be ending, uh, very soon. So the public has some misconception on the figures out there. And I saw one for four hundred thousand dollars or three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So just to reiterate, it's forty-nine thousand dollars to date. And, uh, there's a possibility that, you know, we, we're, we will be, uh, ending the, uh, contract very soon, uh, with whatever conditions we have with them to date. So I think that's important that the community are listening and they hear that figure. So it's the, it's accurate and it's not false information. Forty-nine thousand is a big difference between three hundred and sixty thousand. And, uh, I think too, I, I, I'd like to thank, uh, Garter, cause I think they've done some great work. Numbers are down and, uh, you know, they reported whatever they seen, uh, illegal activity and, uh, helped a lot of people in the last couple of months. So I'd like to thank them.
Certainly I'd like to thank the, uh, the security company too for all their work and also too, to, uh, our community enforcement officers for, uh, leading and guiding the, uh, the, uh, security company through the, the scope of work that we had. Uh, there's no question that, uh, the results, uh, from around town, uh, is well appreciated by the residents, by, by just an ordinary family person, by young people, by business people. Uh, and I'm sure even by, uh, uh, some of the people that, uh, you know, that are homeless, that, uh, uh, there's been times when they have been assisted, uh, found, uh, uh, out alone, uh, uh, in, in a ditch. And certainly that, uh, you know, uh, that, that part of the contract also provides safety to them as well. So, you know, it, it certainly was a, a job well done. Are there any further questions on the, uh, report put forward? There being none all in favor?
Aye.
I motion, carry unanimous. And you have some recommendations?
Yes, your worship. We reviewed an application from Nicola Brittany Cabot, who hopes to acquire a grant for a parcel of crown land located at rear of her property at two B Park Drive. The intended use is to extend her property. The land she's applying for is twenty-two meters by thirty-five meters. I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation to have no objection to the application on the condition that use be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, councillor, uh, Palmeroy, seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation brought forward?
Uh, no questions on recommendations. Just, uh, I was up in that area and I think we're actually going to see, uh, a bit more of that because the residents are looking at expanding back along quite a few houses. So I expect we'll, the town will be in receipt of a few more very similar applications to expand their land back.
Yeah, just, just to add, there are, there are a lot of residents now that have already had the land extended back. And normally what would happen, people just square off with the land. That's gone, how far we've gone back already. So.
Are there any further questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimous.
We reviewed an application from Ms. Joanne Michelin, who hopes to acquire a parcel of crown land, forty-six meters by ninety-two meters along the Trans-Labrador Highway near Quarry Road, uh, for the purpose of building a seasonal recreational residence. I move that council provide conditional approval in principle, subject to NAV Canada providing written approval, accepting the application relating to, uh, NEF contour elevation processes and requirement. If NAV CAN allows development, then app, then the applicant is required to follow the town's discretionary application process, which would include, spare with me a second there, Mayor. Which would include a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA one oh one, be satisfactory completed at the applicant's cost, that the applicant provide an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost, and that the permitted use is only for a seasonal cottage only.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, councillor Palmeroy, seconded by councillor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward?
I think we're probably gonna get a few more of these as well because as the public knows, it's been quite a long time coming trying to deal with some of the requests that, uh, that came from that area. So now hopefully, um, the approvals that we've had the last couple of months will, uh, set a better precedent and a better relation in getting those, uh, the final paperwork, especially with regards to DND and NAV Canada. So I look forward to, uh, hearing more on those. And it's fair to say some of these, uh, recommendations we're seeing here now had applied like years ago and are coming back to the table now because of the NAV Canada conditions. So it's good for, it's good for, you know, for the residents.
Are there any further, uh, questions on the, uh, recommendation put forward? There being none all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimous.
Again, your worship, uh, we, a similar, uh, application from Mr. Gerald Hagerty, who hopes to acquire a parcel of crown land, forty-six meters by ninety-two meters, along the Trans-Labrador Highway near Quarry Road for the purpose of building a seasonal recreational residence. I move that council provide conditional approval in principle, subject to NAV Canada providing written approval, accepting the application relating to NEF contour elevation processes and requirements. If NAV Canada allows development, then the applicant is required to follow the town's discretionary land application process, which would include- discretionary land application process, which would include that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA 101 be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost, that the applicant provides an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost, and that the permitted use is for a seasonal cottage only.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. Excuse me. Are there any questions regarding the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
Thank you, your worship. The town has submitted an application to acquire a parcel of land on Birch Island to be utilized by Healthy Waters Labrador as part of the conservation area. This is crown land, your worship, I should note. I move that council have no objection to the application provided the use is in compliance with the town's development regulations, and that it meets required approvals, small provincial and federal authorities having jurisdiction.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
We reviewed an application from Mr. Fred Mesher, who hopes to acquire the parcel of land that his current residence is located on at 23 Grenfell Street. I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation to have no objection to the application, provided it's compliant with the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
We received a discretionary land use application from Mr. Matthew Barrett, who hopes to establish a home-based business at 15 Hefter Street for the purpose of setting up an office in an accessory building. The office would be for a construction, small construction company. I move that council support the application with the following conditions: that the applicant comply with all of the town's development regulations with particular reference to 6.3.1 for a home-based business; that the applicant obtain written approvals from ServiceNL for fire life safety review and accessibility registration; that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA 101 be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicant provides an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? Excuse me. There being no questions, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
Just following, your worship, we received a discretionary land use application from Nicole and Roberta Primmer, with the intent of establishing a home-based business, specifically a bed and breakfast establishment at 35 Hamilton River Road. I move that council support and approve the application with the following conditions: that the use be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations, with particular reference to 6.3.1 for a home-based business; that the applicants obtain written approvals from ServiceNL for fire life safety review and accessibility registration; that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA 101 be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicants provide an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost; and that all required approvals and permits be obtained from any provincial or federal authorities having jurisdiction in the regulations of bed and breakfasts.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
That's it, your worship, thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to Councilor Dyson Edmonds and Economic Development and Public Engagement.
Thank you, your worship. The Economic Development and Public Engagement Committee met on Tuesday, September the 8th. The meeting was called to order at 12:09. There were no errors or omissions. We received a very detailed report from Mr. Wayland Williams, who has been quite busy as usual, especially with all the construction going on and all of the repairs that have been happening with the roads, you know, having to put out PSAs at all hours of the day, but certainly is appreciated for all his hard work. The Community Development Research Manager's report was also presented. Some of the highlights were updates on several of the files that she was working on. The MyTax bus study, the public transit study, has been moving along and keeping her quite busy. In July, they collected close to four-hundred responses to the initial survey and held our first public consultation virtually. As a result of that, released supplementary survey asking participants to map out their ideal route that the busing would look at. Received multiple responses to that. Brenna also gave interviews to CBC and Saltwire Network to raise awareness, and we also had a booth at the seniors' fund day, which provided quite a bit of information to people who attended Brenna has also applied to be a potential speaker at Expo Labrador on the study, so we're hoping to gauge a lot more interest to some of the movers and shakers in town at that, of course. The Rapid Housing Initiative? Huh? Oh, oh, that's right, sorry. Yeah, I'm just reading the note, sorry about that. The Rapid Housing Initiative was submitted, it was due the last of August, and occupied quite a bit of Brenna's summer for sure. We received strong support on our application from Newfoundland Labrador Housing and presented a design concept. In addition, the addition of provisional capital contributions was also a big help for our application. We won't likely hear any more on this till November before some of the results are announced, and, you know, I'm sure not only council, but the community is crossing their fingers to be successful in that, because it's going to be a huge help in the community. In the meantime, we need to prepare all RFPs just in case we are approved, and Brenna is working with Mr. Dillon on that as well. With regards to the RV park, the department looked further into the process through crown lands, and that is still ongoing. Of course, dealing with the departments can be time-consuming, but we are on top of that as well. We also received an extension on the Reaching Home NL COVID Relief Fund to the end of September to use up the last portion of the funds, although the funds have now been spent, so that was a great help as well. The department is continuing to discuss the next steps on a regular basis with Newfoundland Labrador Housing for the partnership with regards to the gathering place. We submitted a request for provisional housing through the Provisional Housing and Homelessness Partnership Fund. We requested two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for capital funds to support the potential affordable housing build from CMHC. We'll get an update on that as well. There's also been, Brenna's also provided additional support through the Community Service and Recreation Department while that position has been vacant, which is no longer vacant, and we're excited for the arrival of the new CSR director. There's ongoing participation with the action team on homelessness through Labrador Fair Secretariat. Of course, that is definitely ongoing, and the department has also submitted paperwork to the Jump Start funding as well. The Reaching Home Outreach Coordinator funding, we were approved for one year, we submitted for two, we were approved for one, so I guess that'll go again next year, the same type of a thing. We submitted an application through Employment and Social Development Canada for the community capacity and innovation stream back in June. Our submission, of course, was based on a concept already in practice in St. John's called Home Connect for Landlords. Brenna was in St. John's in July and met with their executive director to learn more about the program, and this seems to be a model that operates quite well out there, so we will be looking at that for this area as well. The Community Housing Transformation Center, the fund, to access this fund, it would allow us to formalize our planning process for the gathering place across multiple sectors of stakeholders and develop a plan and business model to leverage for further funding. Brenna is finalizing this month, finalizing this month when Newfoundland Labrador Housing comes to town for the forum. There's been other funding announcements as well. Of course, the province announced a new round of Community Healthy Living for 2122. We had the option of resubmitting our unsuccessful application from 2020. Brenna did resubmit for reconsideration. The kayak and the canoe program funding will require an additional application, which she is submitting before the December 31st deadline. Submitted the application to ACOA's Innovative Communities Fund requesting a hundred thousand dollars for expanded trail upgrades, and, of course, I don't have to give an update on the Healthy Waters, that's coming as well. But that, it was a very busy month, especially for Wayland's and Brenna's department. That being said, I ask that you accept my report as read.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any discussion or question on the report put forward?
Just around the RV park, you know, myself, I've been a strong advocate for an RV park for the years I've been on council, and it's slowly moving ahead, so the people out there who are interested, our next steps from the committee point was to meet again with the Central Labrador Camping Association, so I'm sure that will be followed through, and then, you know, possibly sun and MOU and how we move forward on the land and whatever, so. So hopefully that'll be a reality at some point, it's certainly been a lot of work going on behind the scenes to make it a reality. And I just want to mention about the twenty-five homes that we've applied through Rapid Housing. I know that they have reached out for clarification on some of the land and so on, so that's a good sign, so hopefully we're successful this time. I think they're going to be announcing possibly in November, so we'll be waiting to hear that good news for sure, that we may be successful. And there's lots happening around housing and homelessness. I'm a member of the action team, and we're planning a two-day session coming up in the next few weeks through the, let's do the province and all the stakeholders who sit around the table. The Newfoundland Labrador Housing Network, we have the executive director coming up in October, so he'll be coming up and doing presentations with different groups in the community, and the minister of Newfoundland Labrador Housing is coming here next week, John Abbott, so there's lots of things happening behind the scenes around housing and homelessness, so that's good to see, and we must continue to work on, to try to improve the community around the social issues and the housing and homelessness issues. We're on the right path, if we get twenty-five homes approved, that's huge. Just wanted to mention that.
Can I just add, your worship? Yes, I agree, I mean, having, if we're successful with the Rapid Housing Initiative and being able to provide twenty-five units in our community to deal with some of our housing issues, I think the next thing we have to do, identify exactly where in the community those units would have to go, would have to go through some kind of a consultation process to determine the best location for this, and so there's still a bit of a process involved, but getting the application and getting it approved would be a good first step for sure.
And just back too to that, the twenty-five homes is huge, but so is the gathering place. If we can get a gathering place model, that would be tremendous for this community, so I hope that the town keeps plugging away and moving in that positive direction.
Are there any further questions or comments regarding the report put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously. We'll move on now to Councilor Baker for Finance Administration and Policy.
Thank you, your worship. The Finance Administration Policy Committee met on September 15, 2021, and was called to order at 4:40 PM. Those in attendance, with myself and the chair, Deputy Mayor Bert Primmer by telephone, Councilor Laurie Dyson Edmonds, and DFO Nadeem McGalling, HR Elisha Wagner, and SAT Paulette Miles, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. There was no committee during the month of August. Committee received an updated information from the Municipal Assessment Agency. Committee welcomed Elisha in her new role as Director of resource and employee relations. Elisha has been getting familiar with her role, and she has been busy working on a manual for managers, as well as working on procedures and traffic policies. The committee welcomed Paulette to her new role as Supervisor of Assessment and Taxation. Paulette updated us with the donations, low income and age receivables report. Applications are still being received for 2021 low-income relief. To date, we have received forty-eight applications for 100%, forty-two applications for 75%, twenty-nine applications for 50%, and nineteen applications for 25%. The DFO gave her department expense an overtime report and stated that we are still on budget. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM. The next meeting is to be determined with new council. I now ask the council to accept this report for record, keeping the town council public meeting dated September 13, 2021.
It's been moved by Councilor Baker.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second there?
Second there, Chair.
Seconded by Councilor Grant. Excuse me. Are there any questions on the report put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
So I have the list of recommendations. Donation requests, SPECS. The FAP Committee recommends council approve a cash contribution to the special physical equipment committee for seniors program in the amount of one thousand.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Baker, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
Donation request, golf tournament. The FAP Committee recommends council approve paying registration fees in the amount of four hundred dollars and provide two teams to participate in Memorial Golf Tournament on September 23, 2021.
It's been moved by Councilor Baker, seconded by Councilor Grant. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
I carry unanimously.
Mayor, before this next recommendation, I need to, I'm chair of the local Habitat for Humanity, so I need to declare a conflict of interest and remove myself? The number C274026?
Does Council, the Council Compton-Hobbs?
I think I need to leave.
I'm sorry.
She has to leave.
Sorry. Okay, Council Compton-Hobbs stated her position and felt, excuse me, that she's in a conflict of interest. Does council agree?
I don't know if she would be in a financial conflict of interest, because unless she benefits financially personally, there's no personal financial gain for her, I wouldn't think. Is there, I don't know that, I'm not sure if she's paid by board, or if she's...
No, she is not, it is a voluntary board, but I understand her thinking that it's, you know, even though it's no financial gain for her, it may be perceived, so I respect her decision to declare the conflict of interest.
And so do I, I'll grant the request, so.
And that's I.
Okay?
I agree.
Okay? All right.
So, go ahead, read.
Yeah, go ahead.
Tax exemption requests, 274026. The FAP Committee... The FAP Committee recommends council deny the request for tax exemption.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon, seconded by councillor Cran. Any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being no questions, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. Okay?
The next.
We're just waiting for, there's no water here. We got some water, will we? Okay, carry on councillor Bacon.
Thank you. Tax exemption request 203984. The FAP Committee recommends council write-off the 2021 property tax for PARID 203984 in the amount of $416.48 due to extenuating circumstances.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon, seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous.
Youth travel application, M. Penny. The FAP Committee recommends council approve a cash contribution to Mackenzie Penny in the amount of $300.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon, seconded by councillor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward?
Just say congratulations to Mackenzie, this is huge, and hockey worship, she's an excellent hockey player, and congratulations to her.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous.
Youth travel application, N. Green. The FAP Committee recommends council approve a cash contribution to N. Ten, Green, in the amount of $300.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon, seconded by councillor Palmroyd. Are there any questions on the recommendation?
No, his name is Nathan.
Nathan.
I'm sorry, Nathan. Thank you, councillor Dyson.
And just congratulations to Nathan too, he's an excellent hockey player as well.
Okay, well, there, congratulations. Okay, and are there any further questions?
Thank you.
There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous.
National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Canada's National Day for Truth and Reconciliation is a new federal statutory holiday that provides an opportunity for each public servant to recognize and commemorate the legacy of residential schools. The FAP Committee recommends council declare September 30, 2021, as a designated pay holiday and close all town facilities to provide employees with the opportunity to honor residential school survivors, their families, and communities as we stand in solidarity with indigenous people in our community and nationwide.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon, seconded by councillor Compton-Hobbs. Excuse me. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. That ends your recommendations.
The end of my recommendations. I have approval of the check.
Yes, carried.
I would like to submit for approval of checks in the amount of $2,714,911.35.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Bacon and seconded by councillor Cran. Are there any questions on the check run? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. We come to the last part of our council meeting, our final council meeting, council's quorum. Tonight, I will start with councillor Palmroyd. However, I did have a request from councillor Cran, who wanted a topic to inform council and the public. I will grant his request, then I will come back to councillor Palmroyd and then go on over to councillor Dyson Edmonds and on through. Councillor Cran.
I don't have a whole lot to say, I'm just going to read a prepared statement. Probably some of you guys probably seen it on my social media page. It's regarding independent, independent review on hiring practice with town of Happy Valley Goose Bay. Report of the review was supplied by myself to Labrador Morning. The report was in the hands of council for about a month. Discussions were had around the council table about removing some content, which I was totally against. We made a commitment to the residents of Goose Bay that the report would be released. After much deliberation, I decided to release the document, felt the people of Goose Bay deserved to know this. I feel I did the right thing and I stand behind my decision. If I can't stand behind my statements and decisions, it's time for me to walk away. It's all about transparency. I also want the finger pointing at fellow councillors to stop. This was my decision and mine alone. My name will remain on the ballot for reelection on September 28. After consulting with legal counsel, I will not be making any further comments. Thank you.
So that's your statement from council's quorum. Thank you. I'll now go to deputy mayor Palmroyd.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just a couple of things. I wanted to note that with Kelland Drive being completed now and the extension out to Court Real, in the past, we've had concerns, there's still some concerns about truck moving up Court Real Road and other parts of town. Just wanted to, to advise the public that we are in the process of developing trucking routes throughout the community that would restrict trucks going through certain areas of town, including Court Real. Trucks may be permitted at, at some times, depending on the nature of their reason for being in, in neighborhoods. For example, moving companies, that, that, stuff like that. The groundwater issue on Kelland Drive, very, very concerning in the Mitchell Pottle area and over on Reno, very concerning. It's been, been an issue that's been very concerning for all of council staff since the spring. And, you know, things don't move too quickly and unfortunately, a lot of red tape, the red tape can be pretty thick at times. And there were some issues with getting a tender awarded and then having to get required permits from Environment. I understand Department of Environment had to provide some permits and leave Town Engineer.
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah, and then, then, then it had to be re-tendered. We couldn't go to a process where we could just solicit bids from local contractors, had to go through a tendering process as per Public Tendering Procurement Act. And, and now the equipment has arrived, the dredging should begin very soon, which is very encouraging. Might not be soon enough, certainly not soon enough for, for anybody really, but it's the process that has to take place and it's, it's a long process, unfortunately. I guess some concerns about culvert on Kelland Drive and, and opening that culvert up. Initial advice that was given to, to the town was to, was to basically be very, very careful with respect to moving water from one end of a road to the other side of the road, as it could create other issues that we, you know, wouldn't anticipate. We were of the view that, we were advised that the road would, opening the culvert would, would eventually level itself out. But there was concerns about water moving from one end to the other and potentially causing more damage in another part of town and expanding that, expanding the flooding issue. So I'm, I'm happy that you're monitoring very closely, Town Engineer and your staff is monitoring very closely and will take other actions are necessary to ensure the protection of that neighborhood. And with that, your worship, I want to thank you. I think over the last four years as a council, we went through a few difficult times, we had some good times, we had some hard times. And through it all, through the pandemic and a lot of hours and a lot of meetings and a lot of, lot of work. And you put your time in, sir, and you represent our town through a very, very difficult time. And I want to thank you for that and wish you all the best as you pursue other political careers, hopefully one day, but we'll see where you go from here. But I just want to thank you and that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, okay. And I'll now go on to councillor Dyson Edmonds.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I, I have to clear up a little bit, a misconception in the public with regards to the hiring review. There is a misconception in the public that the contents of the review, the report, was changed. I would like to let the public know that neither the content or the recommendations from the hiring review were ever changed. What, with regards to the names being in the report, that should have never happened. I feel that was a breach of, of people's confidentiality. But I just want to make sure that the public knows that neither the content of the report or the recommendations were ever changed. That being said, I would like to welcome some great new employees to the town. They seem to be fitting in very well. Some of them seem to be following Nadine around. Learning from her for sure, but everything seems to be very smooth. Brenna, who's not here in the gallery, she usually is, but she's not here. I had mentioned earlier about where she had applied to speak at Expo. Of course, we all know that Expo is canceled. That being said, Brenna will take every opportunity she can to speak publicly, not only about our transportation study, but of course, with regards to any bit of support she can get for our housing proposals. So hats off to her. The ribbon cutting at the YMCA was a great event. I'd like to thank Wayland for all of his work on that. There's, you know, when you're talking about all the different levels of government and all of the different groups that have been impacted and that will see the benefits of this facility, trying to get them all together in the same room while holding on to the COVID regulations and, and making sure everybody is, is social distancing. It was, it was a great event and thanks for all your work on that, Wayland. Finally, I would really like to send out our thoughts and our prayers from all of council, I'm sure, to the communities on the south coast who are still trying to bring Mark and Joey home. Once again, it shows the, the issues that we have with search and rescue situations in Labrador. You know, nobody has given up hope, but coming together as a community, it's what we do best. And my heart is certainly with Dwight and Dwight's family and both their families. We are certainly hoping for some good news and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, councillor Dyson Edmonds, councillor Compton-Hobbs.
Yeah, so I just want to talk about the YMCA. The ribbon cutting ceremony, I believe, was seven years to the day that we started talking. So what a, what a wonderful feeling to be at that ribbon cutting with, you know, everybody that worked on us so hard over the years and to see this become a reality, it's a huge asset to our community. And I was very happy to be part of that, for sure. I'd like to welcome, I meant to mention this earlier, but we got a new community service and recreation director hired, Alex Millet, and he'll be starting within the next month or so. And I'd like to welcome Elisha and Paulette on staff as well. They seem like they're doing very well and definitely going to be an asset to the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay. The groundwater issue, it's, to me, is very concerning. It should be number one priority for the new council. To say it's not a town issue, I, I don't have, I can't agree to that, that this is happening within our town. You know, if, if it's, it's going to cost a lot of dollars to find a long-term solution, then we definitely need to work with the federal and provincial government to find the monies, to find a solution to this issue, because it seems to me it's not going away. Definitely, definitely got to be a priority for, for the next council to, to sit down with these people that are impacted and, and the experts and, and figure out how they're going to move forward. I just want to say that the, also in our community right now, there's some tragedy, you know, unfold, well, there's, there's someone missing. So certainly thinking of the Manning and Penny family tonight, hopefully they'll get some positive news, but certainly, and I'm sure all of council are thinking about that, them families right now are being impacted. The last I heard, there was no updates, but hoping for some positive news. You know, we mentioned that it was some challenging times in the past few years. So, you know, we, we went through a pandemic, there has been challenging times around the table and, you know, sometimes you got to ask some challenging questions. And, you know, we, we sit around here, we don't always agree. There's debates, there's, you know, there's, you know, people got their opinions, there's different personalities at the table. And certainly has been some challenging times and we made it through, we made it through, you know, but it, it wasn't always easy. And anybody that's stepping up, you know, for council, you know, hopefully, you know, they, you know, they realize that sometimes it could be very challenging. We don't know what's coming at us while we're sitting here in our seats for four years. We certainly didn't know we were going to be ending up in a pandemic. But I just want to end my council forum off by saying, and I think it's only fitting, that we have a moment of silence, because we started out with Mayor John Hickey, you know, who we lost in tragedy, and we ended up with councillor Joe Tremlett losing his battle to brain cancer. So I'd like to have, for us to have a moment, moment of silence to remember our two fellow councillors tonight.
Okay, I'll move on to councillor Bacon.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Great to see the Kelland Drive extension completed. I have had some residents saying they're happy with this new road. I would like to congratulate Yvonne Jones, who's in her seat as Member of Parliament for Labrador. And I wanted to give a shout out to NDP Amy Norman, Conservative Shane Demerance, and PPC Shannon Champion for putting their names on the ballot. It's certainly no easy task to put yourself out there to campaign and represent residents for the concerns, issues of the day. I appreciate the municipal service staff and Mr. Dillon for keeping an eye on, on the water issue on the Kelland Drive. I agree, we need to find a solution for those who are affected. I want to thank the town staff for all their hard work and dedication. I want to thank Nadine McGolling for her unwavering time and dedication in her role as the acting town manager on top for director of finance in keeping this town debt-free and under budget. I also want to thank Randy Dillon for also taking on the acting town manager's role while as our town manager engineer. Both Nadine and Randy have been working diligently on behalf of the council to address the town's concerns and issues as it rises. I would like to welcome, again, welcome Elisha Wagner and Paulette Miles to the town and also to our new Director of Community Service of Recreation, Alex Millet. I'm happy to see this role filled as an important role for our community, to be engaged, involved in many different sports that this town has to offer. I want to thank the gardener and security for securing safety for all residents, commercial and the transit throughout this town. It was a fun day on seniors' day in Pie Farm Fair and Fins. I'm sorry I missed the official opening of the YMCA, but I'm delighted for all that I've seen from a prop, that we have now a proper swimming engine facility. And I could see from the photos that a large crowd with the smiles from everyone in the large crowd with the official opening pictures. And I will not be able to make to the Happy Valley Day Sunday coming, because I extend my grant as I will be away at that time. Hope everyone have a great time. And I also want to thank the residents of Happy Valley Goose Bay for giving me the opportunity to represent you on your behalf at the town council chambers. As I have indicated, I am seeking to run again for town councillor. Now I'm counting on the residents of Happy Valley Goose Bay to give me another opportunity to continue my hard work and dedication to ensure we keep the integrity of the town's businesses in check with transparency and accountability. I take my role as a councillor very seriously. And I want to thank Mayor Anderson for his service with the town and to all councillors for working with them in these past four years. I wish the best to all candidates who are running for the mayor and council seat this September municipal election. and council seat this September municipal election. And I look forward to representing as your counselor again for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess for me, it's my last meeting and I'm the only one that don't have the name on the ballot. First of all, I want to send out our thoughts and prayers to the people on the South Coast and also to Dwight and Paulette. Sincere heartfelt sympathy from my daughter, who the first year she taught school was in Mary's Harbor and she rented off of Dwight and his wife and they've become very close personal friends. I want to congratulate MP Yvonne Jones on her nomination. I want to thank council for the time that we put in over the past four years. There's been some trying times among ourselves, but we also stood together. And the pandemic, we all remember when we were notified that an aircraft was in the air coming from Italy. Council met and we put a public statement and within 45 minutes, we received a call from the Minister of National Defense telling us that in the future, that communications would be far better and it was. We dealt and we fought with most great polls on the concern of workers coming in from different parts of the country and parts of the world coming into our community. It wasn't easy, but we made a stand and we got them to move all their workers over to the camp. They also moved the locals and they did that, I think I can say beyond the shadow of a doubt, not to get back at Happy Valley Goose Bay, but to, on the advice of their medical people, that if someone over in the camp did have COVID with our workers coming back every night, that they would bring them back to the community. And they had a system where they were tested when they went in, halfway through their two weeks and just before they came back out. We saw paving that was never done before. We saw the wellness center and we brought in four budgets with only half a percentage point increase. Yes, we had some trying times, but we also put in four good years and I think our accomplishments can stand for years to come as to what we've done. The groundwater issue is definitely got to be dealt with and emergency meetings with the federal government. I can tell you, not running and walking away is not an easy thing to do when you see people like the Curls and the rest of them who their dream house that they call and work for with the conditions that they face. And I can tell you that I may not be on council, but I will still try and look at ways and means or advise as to how it could be done. I want to thank Randy Dillon, our town engineer, for the work he's done with us, all our projects, the paving, the wellness center and so on, and for taking over and co-chairing the town manager. I want to thank Waylon Williams, our public relations officer, for helping me every time that the media was out there screaming and wanting an interview. To Brenna and the new staff that's come on for the job you do, we're very grateful. To Paul and Brian in the office out there. To the women that work at the front office who's got to put up with angry people coming in, that they're certainly a credit to our community. To Kathy for adjusting my schedule because I couldn't use the computer. Kathy's taking, you know, two and three times a day. To Larry, whose job, no doubt, is difficult. He's criticized, he's beat up, but at the end of the day, he's out there protecting those. And those who criticize him, that at the spur of the moment, if they needed help, Larry would be the first one to respond. To Keith Pie, our superintendent and his staff that do our water and sewer. Around Christmas time, when it is forty below and there's a big snowstorm on and we're going home from a Christmas party, they're out there repairing a broken line and fixing a broken sewer line. To Frank Brown, while he was here and now to TJ, the BJ Elliott and their crew for the way they do our roads. It's unbelievable. And people who come in town, they tell us that there's no other place in this province that can plow the roads and clear the roads like the town staff in Happy Valley Goose Bay do. To Dominique, for our recreation manager and to Ann Morris who stepped into the staff at the arena. It's unbelievable for the work that they do. To our staff at the landfill, it's, thank you for the job you do. We've got four permanent firefighters, Ramsey White, Rick Harvey, Jimmy Saunders and Donnie Weber. And for the work that they do for our town and ready to go on a call and put their life at stake is a credit to any community. And don't worry, Donnie Weber, I'll be back for an argument even though I'm not on council. To our volunteer firefighters, the men and the women, I can say and all of council can say that we have the most dedicated volunteer fire brigade anywhere in this province. And these people will leave their job site when the beeper goes off to go out there and try and save a life. They're a credit to our community. I want to thank my family for giving me the time to serve on council. To the people of Happy Valley Goose Bay. You know, I made mistakes. I climbed a big hill some years ago and in 2015, I put my name forward, not knowing how they would react. In a by-election, they gave me an overwhelming majority. And in the 2017 election, I was humbled when I toppled the polls of all candidates. To those we lost, like Joe and John and Aldernall. Take the time because it reminds us really how short life can really be. And last but not least, to Nadine McGawley. What you've done to hold us together, thick and thin, fighting our money, arguing, you were there. You were the one who straightened us out. You took over the role of many managers when someone left their position and you done that and never once complained about the extra load work. Any provincial or federal government would take you on the spur of the moment for your ability, for your finance expertise and to bring us to four budgets. You're a credit to our town and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you and everybody else.
Mayor, can we give her a round? Because I think she deserves a round.
Absolutely. I think we can all say that we didn't know what we would do without Nadine for the past couple of years.
That being said and done, my term is finished. Tomorrow morning at seven o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, I will leave to fly if possible. I'm going to spend four days out on the island where there's no television, there's no cell phones and I will take the time to relax. And to council, I wish you all the best and to our staff again, thank you. With that, I will go. I ask for a meeting to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.